And our clerk Cynthia Kraus. In those type of times, there are no working hours of nine to five, or nine to six, or seven to nine. Those hours come all throughout the night, all throughout the morning, on holidays, on Sunday, on Saturdays. And the town is very grateful, the council, to have a mayor that doesn't look at his watch to see what time it is, to say, "I put in enough time to the township of Little Falls." And also, the council members here, who were -- took calls and were there at every moment to assist the residents throughout this really trying time. At this time, Councilman Lees, do you have any remarks?
Yes, some of the offices of the senior advisory board had recently had a meeting. Did you make some plans for this coming year, some new ideas, which we have worked on? And we've opened the year with some new ideas, and I think it'll be a very successful year where the seniors, as it always has been this coming year.
Councilwoman Cordenair?
Yes, thank you. I want to add my thanks to our Office of Emergency Management, and I see Sergeant Gian Dusso sitting here, and I want to give him a special thanks. With all of the work and responsibility, and all of the people calling and pulling at him since our water event, he's had tremendous patience with me in helping to do donations and getting things to people who are in need, and keeping me from, like, screwing things up, which I appreciated. He really was wonderful. And Jim Heaney, who's the Assistant OEM Director, was -- we had the Civic Center open Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday, where we had nicely -- nice clothing and a tremendous amount of cleaning products for the residents who were adversely affected by our water and flood event. And it was great. I think we had about 35 different residents come through, and for every hour that we were open, we had people from OEM there, just giving up their time and helping people and being so kind. And I see Phyllis Dillon sitting, who was there almost every single day. And it was really wonderful to see the community working together. And I also want to thank Bob Dombrowski, who quickly volunteered to help us if we needed to do a food pantry, or have food for residents, and then anything that he or St. Agnes could do. So we truly are a community of neighbors helping neighbors, and thanks. I want to thank everybody.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cordenair. Councilwoman Seaver?
Thank you. I just wanted to mirror all the appreciations out there. You know, you really get a sense of community when you have something like this happen. And to know that we can pull together, whether or not you're a neighbor, a friend, or just a community activist, it doesn't matter, it really takes those walls down to know that we're here for each other, and we couldn't extend a heart -- a bigger heartfelt thank you to all those who've really pulled together and helped, not only the individuals, but the overall community. And for that, I'd really like to say thank you, and we appreciate it. And it makes me really proud to be up here and being the voice of the community, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Seaver. Mayor James Belford-Damiano?
Thank you, Council President. There are a number of administrative things that I need to address this evening. However, prior to doing that, we have an organization here in town that has provided a tremendous amount of work, a tremendous amount of helping hands, and they absolutely -- they absolutely need to be thanked for everything that they have done over the past several weeks for us here in Little Falls. And that is the We Love You Foundation. And I'm going to ask -- and I'm going to ask them to join me up here right now as I extend a heartfelt appreciation to them. Of course, the batteries don't work when you need them to, but that's okay. We can go with the old-school wired bike. I know there's only, you know, a handful of you guys here this evening, and this dwarfs what you guys had here numbers-wise, with the number of hands that you had on deck for us here in Little Falls. And I know that the residents of Little Falls are deeply touched and forever affected in a positive way by what you've done for them. The amount of work that your organization put in, in just two short days over the past two weekends, would have taken these individuals hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours to do. Because in combined man-hour time that you had here, and the number of hands that you had working, it would have been impossible for these people to have done what they've done to this point but for your help. And with that, like I said, I know these residents have reached out to me personally, and they all wanted to send you a heartfelt and deep appreciation for everything that evening. The very first being the passing of Senator John McCain. you've done. And I, along with the council, want to thank you for everything that you've done. Again, regardless of your political affiliation, your views on government politics, he was Thank you very much. We really appreciate everything that you've done for us here in Little Falls. certainly an individual who spent a majority of his -- almost all of his life in public service, whether it was serving in our armed forces or serving in our Senate. He was truly someone that was a paid forward with service, and we want to reflect on his life. And for that, although the state executive order did not require and did not ask that municipal buildings put their flags at half-staff on the day of his burial, we are going to be putting the flag at half-staff until he is buried, and we will then raise the flag thereafter. That said, we have, as Council President indicated, once again, we need to thank everybody in Little Falls who has been so instrumental in helping all of these individuals throughout the town. Everyone from our police department, who did a great job securing the areas of town that were affected, to our fire department, who did a tremendous job helping with the evacuations, along with our DPW, who were instrumental in the original evacuations prior to any large fire apparatus getting there. DPW Director Simone had one of his bucket loaders down there, pulling out individuals in the bucket, kept making sure that everyone was safe. And thereafter, all the follow-up that they've done with all of the garbage removal absolutely needs to be commended. I know the residents are sincerely appreciative of all of the work that the DPW has done in this town over the past several weeks. I know, as soon as the street seems to be cleaned up over the past couple of weeks, as soon as they turned around, it had been refilled, and the guys would get back at it the next day and get all of the debris removed. So a huge thank you to our DPW for that. Our fire department, again, was instrumental in ensuring the safety of 45 individuals who were pulled from their homes on August 11th, and a heartfelt thank you to them as well. Our Office of Emergency Management, headed by our Sergeant Danny Gian Dusso, did just a tremendous job with the response, making sure that everybody had somewhere to stay cool after, not warm, but cool after, and making sure that all of the cleaning supplies have been somewhat endless, and we need to thank you for that. This council, I know I actually, and even till this very moment, have not actually as much time as I've spent with all of them individually or throughout the past several weeks, I've never myself taken or had really an opportunity to thank them for everything that they have done. This council, I am proud to have you up here as members of this governing body. Each and every one of you took tasks upon yourselves, whether it was Councilwoman Cordenair finding homes for the 50 or 60 pets that had been pulled following the floods. And every single one of them was absolutely instrumental in taking on a task to make sure that the residents of this town had somewhere to stay cool, had food, had cleaning products, had clothing. Everything has been, and the response by them has been, absolutely tremendous. And I want to thank you for everything that all of you have done to help all of these residents get through this absolutely horrific time in their lives. So thank all of you. Finally, our administration, Chuck and Cynthia, the two of you have moved very quickly to get the proper funding in place to deal with the emergency appropriations and addressing what we needed to on the municipal side to make sure that we could afford the response that we had to on our end. And I want to thank all of you, Marlene also, I know you were in here day in and day out, and I want to thank all of you for everything that you have done on the municipal end of it. Although not the most glamorous side sometimes, it was certainly something that absolutely was necessary, and we thank all of you for everything that you have done. That said, I'm on to what is actually on this paper, the discussion of the stop sign placement at Union Avenue, Railroad Avenue. This has been something that's been brought to our attention now over the past month or two, and it's something that does need to be addressed. The major issue here, for those that don't know, the intersection of Railroad Ave and Union Ave, which is essentially the intersection where the entrance to the train station is at the very end of Union Ave, right behind the municipal building here and a little bit further down than St. Agnes Church, there is no stop sign at the end of either of the roads, whether it be Union or Railroad Ave. The issue that we find there is that when individuals come around Railroad Ave without stopping because there is no stop sign, those that are heading straight from Union Ave into the train station, find them -- they all find themselves in a pickle there because nobody has to stop. Because Railroad Avenue, and what I'm going to recommend to the council in order to get this done as quickly as possible, because Railroad Ave is a municipally-owned road versus Union, which is a county road, it would be both effective and could be done very quickly, introducing an ordinance to add a stop sign at the end of Railroad Ave to allow those coming down Union into the train station in the mornings or leaving at night to have the right-of-way, making Union -- it wouldn't really be a through street because it does end sort of perpendicular there to Railroad, but making Railroad Ave the stop street and allowing Union Ave to be the through street for people to turn onto Railroad. That is something that I would ask this council to move on quickly. It's been brought to our attention, and I think it's something that, over the upcoming months, should be quickly adopted into our stop sign ordinance. And I would then ask DPW Superintendent Simone to make sure we have a stop sign ready to be planted in the ground as soon as that ordinance becomes effective. That is what I have on my report under -- for this evening, and that's everything.
Do any council members have any questions to the mayor regarding discussion of sign placement at Union Avenue, Railroad Avenue?
Yeah, Council President. I just want to say thank you, because I know this is a discussion that we've had a few times with Corporal Moncato from our Traffic Division, as well as myself in the Transportation Committee. You know, we looked at ways to improve some of the roads, so I'm glad that, you know, the mayor's recommending a stop sign on Railroad because the street could really use it, because there's been some near misses. And I know, too, at night, what happens when there's parents that are driving their kids to use the ball field over there, and people are coming out of the train stop. There have been issues where it's been rather close, so I look forward to seeing this on the agenda in the coming weeks.
Do any other council members have any questions to the mayor regarding the sign placement at Union Avenue? Councilor Wenzel, do you have anything for this governing body tonight?
Nothing in public this year.
Have a motion, a second to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President.
The floor is open.
Phyllis Dillon, 25, Riker Ave. I just have a real quick question. I talked with Mr. Cuccio several weeks ago, and I may have messed up my mind, so just help me out here. I'm concerned, especially having been at the Civic Center for several days and seeing people come in and out. We are having our --
Mrs. Dillon?
Yes, dear.
These are for --
Sorry.
I hate to do this to you, but I have to.
It's not an agenda item?
Correct.
Okay, explain.
So if you hold off --
There's nothing.
Agenda items are those items that are on the agenda before us tonight.
So what do I have to come to the regular?
No, no, there'll be a time for you to talk later on.
Okay.
All right, sorry. I really hated to do that, but --
Why? You're not a job.
Part of the job I don't like.
[laughing]
I feel like I'm reprimanding my mother, you know?
He really means younger sister.
The floor is still open.
Will that be an agenda?
What's that?
If it's --
It's a general matter.
Mr. Fernandez, I'm sorry, that's the way -- Seeing no one else come forward, have a motion and a second to close to the public comment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President.
The floor is open.
Phyllis Dillon, 25, Riker Ave. I just have a real quick question. I talked with Mr. Cuccio several weeks ago, and I may have messed up my mind, so just help me out here. I'm concerned, especially having been at the Civic Center for several days and seeing people come in and out. We are having our --
Mrs. Dillon?
Yes, dear.
These are for --
Sorry.
I hate to do this to you, but I have to.
It's not an agenda item?
Correct.
Okay, explain.
So if you hold off --
There's nothing.
Agenda items are those items that are on the agenda before us tonight.
So what do I have to come to the regular?
No, no, there'll be a time for you to talk later on.
Okay.
All right, sorry. I really hated to do that, but --
Why? You're not a job.
Part of the job I don't like.
[laughing]
I feel like I'm reprimanding my mother, you know?
He really means younger sister.
The floor is still open.
Will that be an agenda?
What's that?
If it's --
It's a general matter.
Mr. Fernandez, I'm sorry, that's the way -- Seeing no one else come forward, have a motion and a second to close to the public comment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We are going to pull the correspondence requesting Little Falls Athletic Club for permission to conduct a handshake, and we'll bring that up for a single, separate vote. And I'll explain to the audience and those watching, the reason for that is there is a conflict with Councilwoman Seaver on this correspondence, so we are going to ask for a separate vote for that. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda without the correspondence.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cordenair?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Abstain.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Can we say?
Yes.
Oh, right. Council -- okay.
Mrs. Kraus, do you have the vote by Councilwoman Seaver?
I do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Affirmative. Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus, read the correspondence, and then we'll take a vote on it.
Sure. Request from Little Falls Athletic Club for permission to conduct a handshake on Saturday, September 15, 2018, and Saturday, October 13, 2018, at the intersections of Route 23 Main Street, Main Street Stevens Avenue, and Main Street Union Boulevard.
May I have a motion to accept this correspondence?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cordenair?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Abstain.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
We're on to new business. Mrs. Kraus, please read Ordinance 1329.
Second reading and public hearing of Ordinance Number 1329, an ordinance entitled "Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, Amending the Township Code, Chapter 19, Animals."
Can I have a motion and a second to open to the public hearing on Ordinance 1329?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to close to the public hearing on Ordinance 1329?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Motion carries. Have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 1329.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember Cordenair?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus, please read Ordinance 1330.
Second reading and public hearing of Ordinance 1330, an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the Township of Little Falls Adopting a Redevelopment Plan for the Singac Industrial Zone Redevelopment Area."
Can I have a motion and a second to open to the public hearing on Ordinance 1330?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion and a --
I'm sorry.
Have a motion and a second to close to the public hearing on Ordinance 1330?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 1330.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember Cordenair?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus, can you please read Ordinance 1331?
Second reading and public hearing of Ordinance Number 1331, an ordinance entitled "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Reconstruction of Donato Drive Inbound for the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to Appropriate the Sum of $750,000 to Pay the Cost thereof to Authorize the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation and to Provide for the Issuance of Bond Anticipation Notes in Anticipation of the Issuance of Such Bonds."
Have a motion and a second to open to the public hearing on Ordinance 1331.
So moved.
Second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion and a second to close to the public hearing on Ordinance 1331. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, did you want to speak, Mr. Fernandez? I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Mr. Fernandez, he has to go to the podium.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. You have to --
Regarding Ordinance 1331?
Yes, sir.
You said the appropriate -- to appropriate sum of $750,000 to pay for the cost. Didn't we have a grant?
I think it was $750,000.
Well, that's what I meant, I'm sorry.
Right, right.
Wasn't there a grant that was a --
$600,000 from DOT.
From DOT, right?
Correct.
So at the end of -- once the smoke clears, it's only $150,000 worth of --
So, Council President, if I may, so the way that the grants work, they don't give you grant money until you've spent the money, in theory. So the reason that we're appropriating $750,000 is to ensure that if they're -- we're estimating the cost to be somewhat lower than that. However, in the event of an overage, in the event that we find a stormwater upgrade needs to be made while the ground is open, we can do that. The entire amount first needs to be bonded. We essentially need to show the Department of Transportation, State of New Jersey, that yes, we have spent this money on this project. Once we can show them that, they then send us back the grant for the $600,000, which is just a reimbursement.
Mr. Fernandez, was that question answered?
Yes.
Does anyone else have a question regarding that process? I know it sounds real technical, you're welcome to ask it.
And that's true with all grants, just to be clear.
Have a motion and a second to close to the public hearing on Ordinance 1331.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 1331.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember Cordenair?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus, please read Ordinance 1332.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1332, an ordinance entitled "Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, Amending the Township Code, Chapter 71, Fees, with a Second Reading and Public Hearing Scheduled for September 24, 2018."
Have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 1332.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in -- Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember Cordenair?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus, please read Ordinance 1333.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1333, an ordinance entitled "Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, Amending the Township Code, Chapter 71, Fees, with a Second Reading and Public Hearing Scheduled for September 24, 2018." It's the same title, it's just two different.
So we asked for a roll call here, is that correct? Did we do the roll call? No. Yes.
We need a motion.
You need a motion.
You need a motion, is that it?
Right. Have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 1333.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember Cordenair?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Whenever it gets to about the fourth one, I start to want to pick up the pace, so to say, you know? Mrs. Kraus, can you please read Ordinance 1334?
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1334, an ordinance entitled "Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, Amending the Township Code, Chapter 280, entitled "Zoning, with a Second Reading and Public Hearing Scheduled for September 24, 2018."
Have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 1334.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember Cordenair?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobah?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus, read Ordinance 1335.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1335, an ordinance entitled "Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, Amending the Township Code, Chapter 7, Entitled Traffic, with a Second Reading and Public Hearing Scheduled for September 24th, 2018."
Can I have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 1335?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Mrs. Kraus, may you please call the roll?
Councilmember Corderne?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. Can I have a motion and a second to open to the public comment for general matters only?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Mrs. Dillon, yes, you may.
Billis, now you know.
I'm, I'm sorry. Mrs. Dillon, hold on one second. Uh, Mrs. Kraus, can you please read the statement?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President.
Take all the time you want, Mrs. Dillon.
I'm gonna be quick. I, I wanna, I may not live that long, be long. Anyway, what this is about basically, I just have a quick question. I was at the Civic Center this past week, several days, and back and forth through the back entrance, you know what the construction is gonna be done there. When is it gonna be done?
Right, you're talking about our back steps to go into the rear of the Civics, uh, Civic Center.
Yes, yes. I'm concerned because we have, uh, our annual Harvest Moon Dinner on the 26th of October, and there's a lot of elderly people that go in there, and, you know, it's an accident waiting to happen. So, I'm just concerned about that.
Right.
Thank you.
You know, we always wish, uh, times like this, sometimes we could go to a private company and just get it done, but that's not the case. Mayor, do you have an update on that?
Yes, so we applied for a CDBG grant, which is a Community Development Block Grant, to enhance two areas in town with greater ADA accessibility. One of them being the entrance to the Morris Canal on the western side of the, uh, Stevens Ave, essentially, so the furthest west access point, which now is the steps down to the canal, uh, that's one. The other is the Civic Center entrance. CDBG grants are generally awarded in October. That means that we will find out, A, if we did receive it, B, how much the grant is for, and at that point, we can then move forward with the project. At that point, we can then move forward with the engineering that's associated with it. Unfortunately, that, once these CDBG grants are awarded, you're generally into the winter months when the construction is more difficult. So, it may not be, hopefully, the soonest is anticipated, maybe a spring project actually seeing new, uh, a new access there. And unfortunately, it's because we apply, you know, we've had to apply for this grant to receive the money, um, to do this, and we're now waiting for that award. So, that's the, the timeframe on that.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have any estimated costs on this type of, um, construction?
I, I don't recall off the top of my head, but yes, there were. Um, those numbers were all included in the grant application that was sent down to, uh, to the county for the CDBG, uh, award. Um, those are just estimates that are submitted, um, just like you need to with every single grant with the scope of the work. Because, again, you can't just ask for a couple million dollars without showing them what it is that you're looking to do with it. So, we are, uh, there was an estimate, I unfortunately don't recall off the top of my head what that number was. Uh, please, it may have been around $250,000 for the Civic Center.
Just one quick question, when did we actually apply for the grant?
Uh, that grant was submitted, oh, very early this year. It, it was, it was early spring/winter this year. March 31st, um, was the deadline for the CDBG applications this year.
Thank you.
The floor is open. Ma'am? Just state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Deborah Minardi, and I live at 14 Scentel Avenue, Little Falls. And the reason that I'm here tonight is because we have a real problem with Montclair students, uh, renting a house, piling six kids into a house. That's technically two bedrooms with a converted garage, and they're using a basement, which is, has no fire escape. It's not legal. I, I don't know where to go with this. I've seen many of you before, we've had this discussion.
Mayor, you have any update on this?
I do, Council President. I was just made aware of this, uh, over this weekend by Ms. Minardi. I forwarded this over to our building department. He is well aware, he is, uh, going through some documents right now and investigating whether or not that use, or the extent of the use is, is something that is or is not permitted. Uh, I'm hoping to have something back from him within the next several days, uh, addressing that.
Now, when they do a CO, how do they, how do they, they're saying they can, they can bunk them up to a, to a room.
Well, when the CO is issued for a home, it's only issued for what was, what the plans indicated the home would have, and, uh, when the CO was issued, I'm sure it was in compliance at that time.
They walk down in the basement, and there's construction down there, that's, that's a problem?
If a permit was never pulled, uh, then it absolutely would be a problem, to the extent that it's a violation.
Into the residence?
Yes, and I saw that in the email, it was some, certainly, we've informed the building department of.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, for those that have cell phones, can you please silence them during this session? Mr. Fernandez? Uh, go ahead, sir, he's letting you go. General Matters, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Danny Isco from 76 Williams Street. August 11th, I experienced my first flood. And it was kinda scary, 'cause I didn't know when the water was gonna stop coming onto my property. One thing I experienced was that all the water was coming from all directions to my property. I was told this, uh, that my house is on a lower scale, or whatever, of the, you know, streets and sewers and everything. It's all coming down to my property. Even water from, uh, Lewis Street was coming up, uh, around the corner from the little street there to Williams Street. And even the empty lots from the buyouts next to me, I have three of them on one side, I'm gonna have two on the other side. All the water is just coming to my property. I was the only one, the only house around that got over a foot of water all around my house. I would like to know, what, what help can I receive? FEMA sends me a letter with huge increases every year, $600, $800 increases every year, and they tell me I'm eligible for mitigation for something, and I don't know what am I eligible for? You know, what kind of help am I eligible for, and where do I get that help? Or am I just left there to keep paying all these increases every year and not get, get any help?
Your, your question to this governing body has concerning that your house was flooded over the recent flood that this township experienced, and you wanna know what resources are available for you to, uh, to obtain to help get your house back in order? Is this what you're asking?
Get it in order and also to prevent future floods. And, you know, it's obvious to me the solution is to elevate the house or get some kind of, like, uh, barrier, whether, whether it be like, you know, flood barrier, like, you know, I don't know, cement walls all around the house. I don't know, just something to keep the water from coming on my property. Because the scary thing was, was not knowing when the water was gonna stop rising, you know? It got into my, um, crawl space like four inches or whatever, you know? And it's like damaging the, um, bottom of my house, uh, the foundation area. You know, the water is like all rotting away and stuff from all the floodwaters and stuff. And, um, I need help with the, you know, getting the house fixed and raised or something.
So, sir, um, we here, our primary goal is to keep the residents as safe as we can, but there are things that occur in the world, such as flash floods that we experience, and the water where it goes, we're not here to see anyone have those type of troubles and do whatever we can. But, having said that, many residents experience flooding in their homes, uh, throughout this flood. Mayor, do you have any comments?
Yeah, the, the, th- this was something that I, I started to address at one of the prior meetings. The municipality itself, uh, does not have funds available to help individual homeowners throughout the township, whether it be with elevations, whether it be with, uh, those, those sorts of programs. None of those types of things are funded with any municipal funds. We, in fact, just basically squeak by every year with the funds that we do collect, um, with our regular expenses. I think the conversation that you need to have is, is twofold. One of them, well, first, let me backtrack. The one thing that we are still looking for, uh, is for the federal government to declare the, to declare the Township of Little Falls and the other surrounding communities here a disaster area. And FEMA was in town last Thursday, uh, they toured the town. It is something that needs to be done in order for the federal government to send funds back to the homeowners in Little Falls. It is a stringent, uh, threshold to reach. We're hopeful that, well, I, I'm hopeful that they will do something. However, I know in, you know, exploring former, former, um, FEMA private grant reimbursements, uh, the threshold is, is a very difficult one to reach in order to accomplish that. I will certainly continue to fight with the, you know, the state to help us in our fight with the, the federal government, uh, in an attempt to secure that. But I, I, again, that's something that we are waiting on right now, when, when we don't have an answer. That said, if you are, if you are in the flood zone and you have some protection from FEMA, um, you may wanna reach out to them directly, see what kind of, uh, options are available to you. And then, unfortunately, the last and probably worst, most expen- the best but most expensive option is elevation. You can always elevate your home on your own. Again, not the answer, exactly, I know, not the answer that you're, you're looking for, I'm sure.
If I have to pay $4, $800 a year increases every year? Where am I getting $4, $800 every year to pay more and more to FEMA and they're not doing nothing for me?
I, I couldn't agree with you more.
And why are they treating us like we're, we're a community on a shore where we, we have a threat from a whole big ocean that you don't know how big the wave's gonna be? And, and, you know, wipe us away, when it's inland, it's from a river. You know how much, you know, flooding is gonna be. You could just raise the house, and there goes the solution.
It seems that FEMA treats everybody the same within the, uh, the floodways. Uh, and, you know, unfortunately, I guess, for, for a number of us here in Little Falls, you're right, I guess we are treated somewhat like a, uh, an ocean town.
It's not fair.
And I, I, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you I have a good answer for you, one that you're gonna wanna hear. I, I don't, I don't know that there is one, um, unless FEMA were to, you know, declare us a disaster area. Short of that, I, I don't have a good answer, and I'm sorry to, to say that. But, I think we're all, you know, a lot of residents in this town are in the same boat here in that we're, we're, we're hopeful right now that we can get this federal funding. Again, it's a difficult threshold to reach, um, but, again, these, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have a good answer.
Can't, can't our, uh, state representatives, you know, in Washington, can't they talk to FEMA and, and tell them, you know, it's not fair treating us like this? You know, they're, they're asking us for more and more money and not giving us any help.
I couldn't agree with you more. Unfortunately, our representative, uh, down in Congress right now, I don't know where he's been for the past, uh, year. So, we don't have someone that they're fighting for us. We're, we're trying to branch out to some of our surrounding, uh, congresspeople to ask them to fight for us. But, uh, you know, it, it's sort of asking someone who wasn't affected to do that for us. And they're trying, but it's, it's been an uphill battle.
I just don't know how long I could keep up with, like, $400 to $800 a year increases and, uh, you know, not getting any help, you know?
I couldn't agree with you more.
That's not fair.
Council, uh, Council, council?
Uh, if the gentleman can stay for after the, um, meeting's over, I'd like to get your information, and I'd like to see if I can get you in contact with someone that may be able to provide you some information and potentially some assistance.
Okay.
Uh, with regard to your situation. I know that area very well, I know what, um, is going on down there, and hopefully, I can, um, put you in contact with somebody, sir. So, if you wait after the meeting, I'll talk to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Does the council have any other questions or comments concerning the residents' comment? The floor is open, sir.
Bob Dembrowski, Three Garden Street. Yeah, we'll get back to Dan. I mean, the town, that, that's one of the few, this is probably the first time them streets flooded. Outside of Floyd, that wasn't river flooded. I mean, with the amount of water that was coming down there, it's the lowest part of where, because that, that was right behind my old house. I mean, we built the pump station, you had a pump station at every house, it wasn't gonna contain that water. And it was unfortunate, and, you know, we're lucky that we didn't have enough. This one's for Phil, I forgot to mention it to Phil before the meeting. The Brook, uh, Brookside Stream that runs underneath Main Street, right over here, um, the pipe is broken, it's in the water and all underneath, it's all jammed up with trees. The, right when it goes underneath Main Street, on the southern side, uh, it's all j- and the pipe, the discharge pipe from Brookside is broken off and it's down, and all the branches are behind. That's all I have, that's my.
Thank you, Mr. Dembrowski. I'm sure Mr. Simone has heard your comments, and he'll get back to the mayor regarding that.
Council President, if I may?
Mayor?
Just very quickly, uh, in one of our, my conversations after the storm with, uh, Mr. Simone, he had indicated some of the flow amounts that our pump stations, uh, received. And the five inches in 50 minutes inundated the pumps for something that they were not engineered to handle. Some of our pump stations had two, and some of them up to four times as much water coming in as the largest pump can pump out. So, for example, if the pumps are made to pump out 10,000 gallons per minute, um, some of our pump stations had 40,000 gallons per minute coming into them. It was simply something that, uh, the township, whether it be 100 years old in that area, was just not, was never engineered to handle. And I don't think, I think that was an issue throughout the entire state, uh, during those storms, is that the infrastructure throughout the state is not made to handle five inches of rain, or whatever that amount of rain that a particular area had in that short period of time. Uh, hence the flooding on the streets that have never once seen any sort of water in the streets. Uh, and I, again, uh, Mr. Simone, I don't know if you have those numbers here today, but, uh, I know you had shared them with me at one point, and some of them were four times greater than they're, they're, they're made to, to handle. So, that was just something I thought I'd share.
Mr. Fernandez?
Louis Fernandez, Harry Song Street. First of all, I, I sympathize with this lady, with the, uh, with the students, because as you are well aware of, um, I have the same problem. We might even have the same, uh, they mu- No. Uh, but I, I have the same problem on a, a two-family that right across from me that it was made into, uh, the use of the attic and so on, a garage and so on, and so. And they tell me that is perfectly legal. So, I took it to the state, let's see what they do. Anyway, the, um, the threshold, you said that, um, unfortunately, right now, uh, Mr. Mayor, you said that the, unfortunately, right now, Little Falls doesn't meet that amount. Can you tell us what that amount is? Because as far as I know, and I, I think I, I heard this from you, the amount of damage in Little Falls exceeds $16 million.
No, I never, I've never said we didn't make any threshold.
The amount of the threshold, what, what is it?
So, Mayor, I think the question is, Mr. Fernandez, you're asking, what is the threshold? What is the amount of dollars that the threshold that FEMA would kick in?
Is that, that's what you're asking? Yeah, how high is it?
So, it's, it's, it's a, it's a formula that, you mean statewide, it's just not Little Falls. It's just not our town.
But they, they can BS us all, you know, all they want, saying, "We'll never reach that amount."
We don't set those guidelines.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Was that your question? I wanna make sure.
No, no.
That was, okay.
Well, it's not answered, but it is what it is.
Thank you.
Um, one, another thing, you say, um, and you said that they're fighting with the, uh, while they're, they're trying to, uh, get funds from our representative and all that.